Hey, we ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November twenty fifth Select Board meeting. We are going to start our meeting with the cannabis to be followed by liquor control, and then get into all the fun stuff from there. So first order of business is would any of you like to make a motion on the agenda of the Cannabis Commission?
I make a motion that we adopt the Cannabis Commission Agenda as written.
We have a motion in a second, any changes? None heard. All in favor of approval of the Cannabis Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Approval of the minutes of the October twenty eighth Cannabis Meeting.
Make a motion, we approve those minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. All in favor of approval of the Cannabis Commission Minutes from October twenty eighth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Item of business is to consider renewal application for retailer Pine Grove Organics. Pleasure, the board.
I make a motion that we approve this application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None heard.
Oh, I have one question. Do we, does the town earn one percent money off of cannabis sales? Okay, then we definitely, they're busy.
Okay, the town gets one percent of anything that comes from the renewal and this placements. All in favor of approval of this renewal, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Item four on the cannabis is public comments on cannabis. Cannabis. None heard. Brian's motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the cannabis control.
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Now we move on to liquor. First thing would be to adopt the agenda of the Liquor Commissioners.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda of the liquor, liquor the agenda, we adopt the agenda as posted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor of adoption, the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Next would be approval of the liquor minutes from November eleventh.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Approve a special event catering permit that was issued at the time of application by our town manager for the annual auction. Town clerk. For the auction that has already happened, so let's approve it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that.
Be my guest, you go for it, Brian.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the library's annual auction liquor permits. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Anyone like to make any comment on the liquor control? None heard.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn liquor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now the real show. Select Board Meeting. First thing would be to have adopt the agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as posted.
We have a second.
Second.
Any additions to the Select Board Agenda? None heard, all in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Select Board Members' Remarks, that is myself, and I would just say again, we have a new faces in the crowd, welcome to our meeting. We try to hold these meetings in a peaceful, respectful manner. Remember that everyone you're talking to or about is your neighbor and you will meet them in a grocery store tomorrow or the next day, so please be nice. Other than that, that is the opening comments, would anyone else like to add anything? No, okay. Item three, reoccurring matters, Select Board Minutes.
Make a motion to approve the November eleventh Minutes.
Motion on the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additions or changes on the Select Board Minutes? None heard, all in favor of approval of the November eleventh Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Select Board Budget Committee Minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from the Select Board Budget Meeting.
Motion, do we have a second?
Sure, a second.
Motion in a second, any errors or corrections?
Uh-uh, just thanks for taking minutes, Seth.
Pardon?
Thanks, thank you to Seth for taking minutes.
All in favor of approval of the Budget Advisory Meeting Minutes from November eighteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
And the warrant, pay the bills.
I make a motion that we approve the warrant.
Second.
Motion in a second on paying the warrant. Any questions? Before voting? None heard. All in favor of the warrant for one million three hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my published report, I've just draw attention to three items. One is that if you have suggestions, if anybody from the public or the board has suggestions regarding speed limits on town roads or signage for stop yields, those kinds of things. The Traffic Ordinance Review Working Group is still working on stuff, and so if you have suggestions like that, go ahead and send them my way and I'll bring them to that group. Secondly, there was brought to the town's attention a small spot on North Street resurfacing that did not adhere properly. And I wanted to highlight that Pike Industries returned really promptly, cut out a whole section of lane and repaved it. And further for the awareness of the community, if anybody would be willing to step up, the town needs another representative, a voting representative on the insect control district due to a resignation. I did have, I put on the Select Board's tables tonight some updates for things that happened today. Not today, this one, but the Sanderson Covered Bridge was again hit by a truck on Friday with damage resulting that was more extensive than the elision earlier this month. So in the first incident, the police were able to get the driver's information, so we know that insurance company. In the second incident, likewise, they obtained the driver's information and insurance company, so the town's insurance will be working with the driver's insurance. I did speak with Naylor and Breen, and one course of action could be to retain the original work that you awarded them based on the quotes that came in and take the second incident as a change order on that quote because the second truck got further into the bridge and damaged a different, another beam. That's probably the best way forward. I did meet with the town's property assessor to review the grand list updates, and that will be in your December ninth Select Board Agenda for signatures. The town has received this month the local option tax payment from the state for July, August, September sales. The amount is eighty-one thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. This is the second largest quarterly payment the town has ever received, typically that is the highest quarter of any year for the town's receipts. And then later in the meeting, you have the BlueO update report from the Planning Commission, and there's some language there if you choose to move this along to the public hearing stage, which would be the next stage. And I have just been speaking with the reporter editor of the reporter, and they are able to publish it this Wednesday if you move in that direction, so the earliest hearing date is listed there, it's December twelfth, but it might be good to have the hearing date as far away from the main holidays as we could, we'd need to accomplish it in December, it can't be pushed off into January under the conditions of the grant the town received.
Thank you for your report, questions for Mr. Hopkins from the board.
I have one, what would we have to go through for putting up the permanent barrier in front of that bridge?
So I spoke with the fellow from Vermont Heavy Timber who came down to look at the bridge the first time to clear it for traffic, he actually came down again today to check out the new damage. He's very generous with his time and his knowledge, and he said that recently in, I want to say St. Johnsbury, but maybe it was Linden, there was erected a steel barrier that I guess from what he says was the first one in Vermont, so I would, if you want to go that route, I will contact the town manager up there and find out what they had to get clearance from for V-Trans. So there's, he said that one is not a sway bar, it's a fixed bar, and I think we were talking about stuff that was not fixed, because there will be some damage that will result to a vehicle hitting that bar which the town could then be liable for if it's like a more than a cosmetic damage will have bigger problems.
I have just, I grew up crossing that bridge when it was not a cover bridge way back when it was a temporary bridge for a decade or whatever. And I don't take for granted that the whole thing is wood, it's really amazing when you walk through, it's like my daily walk, and what I was noticing this last, I actually didn't, I was like, man, this was more damage than I thought, and then there was another hit, I just didn't know. I wonder if we could use some of the old timbers as the sway bar because I really do worry about, like, we put in a ton of effort, that whole bridge is wood. And it feels like such a shame to have anything steel right smack dab in front of it.
Oh, it wouldn't be there.
All that effort, so.
So I think that the main idea with this is to put them back at a place where the truck could turn around safely. So in that, on that side, it seems to be getting hit from the Sudbury side, the west side. And so that would be back at like Short Swamp.
Just because of the kindness of Ralph who lets them turn around in his driveway.
The ones that go by my place come back.
Yeah.
Okay. There was an aesthetic kind of concern expressed, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that just would be my concern is that we have so much effort put into keeping it all wooden. And the temporary bridge that was, I mean, temporary for
I see your hands, I'll be with you in one minute.
It's not so pretty.
Conversation from the board on this. I personally don't care if it's wood or steel. It's easier to repair something wood if it gets hit and probably won't kill anyone, but.
My own opinion is that the sway is a desire to a fixed. And, yeah.
Okay, now I saw hands up, I'm not sure who they were, in the back.
Come up to the mic.
Unfortunately, I need you to come up to the microphone because there's people on Zoom that can't hear you, I'm sorry. And you need to give us your name.
Kevin Smith. What do we have for proper signage down there to let these people know they're trying to go through there with a tractor trailer truck? That obviously five hundred feet, a thousand feet before they get to it, something that says no tractor trailers beyond this point, ten thousand dollar fine, and stick to it, plus the repairs. Maybe these guys before and, 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 you know, obviously these guys aren't going to pay attention, most of these guys that are driving trucks now that, you know, they don't know how tall the truck is from the road up, so they're not going to get out with a tape measure and go, oh, let's, oh, I can fit through fourteen-four. You know, it's proper signage, big signs before they get there, just turn around beyond this point, no, no large trucks beyond this point.
I can.
And then you wouldn't have to have a barrier, I mean, you could still put the barriers as a caution.
I believe we have.
We have signs that, so the signs are fairly far before the bridge because the signs are at the intersections where it's like your last.
How large are the signs?
It's a big.
There, it's a big sign and it says.
One right in front of my house that shows a truck hitting an overhang, that's, and it, then there's one right on the end of Corona Street, that's a whole paragraph that says you're not gonna.
Don't trust your GPS.
GPS, you're not gonna, and all that stuff, and they keep going.
And this stuff on the other side too.
Yeah.
So maybe it's better off to get them away from the houses because they're not concentrating and get them closer to the bridges.
Maybe more signs, it wouldn't hurt.
Ten thousand dollar fine, I mean.
But I think they put them, I think they put them there because you can turn around at my place, if you put them down there, there's no place to turn around.
I watched a fifty-two foot trailer turn around.
Some of them do, but I've seen the record go by and tow a lot of them out of that field.
I have seen it fifty-two foot, fifty-two foot, I told the guy he wasn't gonna make it. That was about a month ago.
Yep.
And I turned him around.
Okay. Point well taken, and we'll look at the signage and the turnaround. That was, I think, I'm sorry, I think the next hand was back here, sorry. You guys have to fight over it.
Mickey Disorder, it seems like understanding your truck clearance is pretty basic to getting, would seem pretty basic to getting a CDL. And this should be pushed back on the agency that's licensing these individuals, better training.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Some parking decks I've noticed have free entry, like this tube that goes over the top, and so if your vehicle's too high, I know I hit them. And it smacks the top of your vehicle so that you can't, you know, it's like, oh crap, I'm not going in there, I'll rip the parking deck and I'll take the whole roof off, you know, off my vehicle. I wonder how that might help.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about just a moment ago.
Yeah.
Those pre-barriers, yeah, flippers. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I guess there's enough interest that we should look into what that other town has done and what we could do, because it's just getting recently we won't have a bridge there, I guess, right?
Can I just make a comment?
Any other questions for the town manager?
Oh, Tricia, Tricia.
Trish?
I was just gonna say before the first speaker spoke was that I think that there needs to be a major fine so that these companies take some responsibility, just doing insurance claim obviously isn't working, but I think if we have a major fine with where those signs are with flashing lights, you know, so it's, it's, you can't ignore them and put the money in big letters so that it's the money they see more than the, you know, your truck isn't gonna make it sign, that maybe they'll pay more attention to that.
Okay, thank you very much. We got some things to look at anyway. Okay. Any other questions other than Sanderson Bridge, the town manager? None heard.
Is now the time that we might make this motion to get the land use ordinance scheduled?
I, I think you might want to do it just, you know, in number nine, I thought would be a good spot.
Sure, we can do it there.
And do we need to make an official, I guess we have to wait for a little more information from Naylor and Breen before we?
Well, I just contacted them this morning and they will get back to us with any change order that they might propose.
And we know that the bridge is safe in the meantime.
The bridge has been evaluated and is remains safe.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on then, if there's no more questions for the town manager, we go to the Community Development Report for Mr. Moore.
Thank you, this is my report for today, November the twenty-fifth. The town readies for the year-round programming of the town hall space, we're actively recruiting volunteers to help plan and work events for the upstairs and downstairs space. Please reach out to me, Bill Moore, by way of email, the email address is community@brandonvermont.gov. The town hall upstairs will be closed the week after December sixteenth for the annual refinish of the floors by Mountainside Flooring. And when they installed the floors last year, they promised to come back for the first three years and throw a new coat of poly on them, which is fantastic, and we'll be doing the first one that week. The Friends of the Town Hall voted unanimously to use their leftover funds from the dissolution of their amazing organization to fund the twenty-twenty-five Silent Movie Series, there'll be seven different dates, being sponsored by the Friends of the Town Hall. And again, it was a generous donation made by the Friends and we thank them for that. The Brandon Museum and Brandon Recreation Department are excited to co-host the film Lost Nation at the Brandon Town Hall on Sunday, December fifteenth at two PM. Vermont filmmaker Jay Craven will be at the screening to present the film and run a question and answer session after the show. This is a free event thanks to sponsorship from Phoenix Feeds, National Bank of Middlebury and Hanford Supermarket. This Revolutionary War-era action drama set in early upstart Republic of Vermont will be a great way to spend a Sunday afternoon. The town of Brandon will be signing a lease agreement with University of Vermont to rent one of the two storage rooms, that one right there, connected, connected to the downstairs meeting space and occasional daytime use of this conference room for their assistive technology tryout center that is staffed by Brandon's own Ben Womet, a member of a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, the amount remitted to the town will be forty-five hundred dollars a year annually. We will be bringing to the board a request to adjust two different lot lines on Jones Drive to correct a historic error that is the town possessing land that should have been part of the land after the subdivision of the Brandon State School, and that is my report for today.
Questions for Bill Moore? You, you pique my interest on the lot lands up at Jones Drive, is how much, how much land are we talking, is it a minor?
It's minor, I want to say it's between a third and a half an acre, somewhere in there, but it's land that's on the side of the road that historically had been, I mean, had been used and this entire time used by altercation, the building that was altercation that's at the top of Jones Drive, and there's a little bump that goes into the land that's part of three-three-three Jones Drive that Naylor and Breen now owns for that land, so we'd adjust that lot line, we'd request to have the Select Board considering adjusting that lot line to include that bump to straighten the line out and then to take that land that they've been using this entire time and and give it to the new owners, or potential new owners of the altercation building.
Other questions for Mr. Moore? Questions for Mr. Moore from the public? None heard. Mr. Moore is off the horse seat. Item six, designate representatives to the Rutland Region Emergency Management Committee. Would you like to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so the Regional Committee has two members from every town, one is either the Emergency Management Director or their designee, and the other is an emergency services representative from fire, police, or rescue. So I did ask Fire Chief if he would be willing to participate again, he's very faithful about attending meetings, I will say, Brandon is well represented, at these many towns don't have anybody and we often have two. And I'm the Emergency Management Director, I'm happy to do it again unless the Emergency Management Coordinator or somebody else wants to do it, it's a quarterly meeting generally.
Pleasure, the board.
I'm moved that we make these appointments.
Second. We have a motion in a second to reappoint Seth Hopkins and Tom Kopeck. Discussion. None heard. All in favor of reappointing Seth and Tom, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, moving on. Item seven, discuss the charging station rate. Or that's the electric vehicle charging station rate at Green Mountain. Changes their rates, we want to change ours, correct?
Right.
That's your item?
Yeah. I think every year when their rates go up, ours should go up the same percentage rate.
So the rate for twenty-twenty-five, the, the base rate increases five point two-six percent?
Like to make a motion and increase our base rate five point six-two percent.
Five point two-six?
Two-six.
Yeah.
I'm dyslexic.
Did, did you?
Can we have that?
Ask, like.
Yep.
Did, did you intend though that you wanted that to be like an automatic every year?
Automatic every year.
So maybe slightly different motion or amended?
Oh, amended, that when the rate goes up, our, our rate goes up the same as theirs.
I'll second that.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to raise again the, the idea that it's unfair to only charge parking on those two parking places. And that I would like to make an amendment to the motion that for sure we need to make the rates go up when the electricity goes up because that's, makes sense, that's the cost. But that I would like to eliminate the parking fee that's associated with parking in those spots because they're the only parking spaces in town that we charge for, and there's really no reason to do that.
Because I live so close to that and.
Actually, I think since I made a motion, either it needs to be seconded or not. Before we discuss. And then we can discuss.
I'll second for.
So I can see through the woods to that parking lot, I own the land right next to it. And that parking lot gets a lot more action than you would ever guess, and I think having, and those charging spots are more often than not, there is at least one of them used, it seems like, when I, I mean, it's not like I'm taking formal data, but what I go through more often than not, I can keep notes on which electric cars are out there because there's somebody there. So I would definitely encourage us to continue charging for the parking if people want to use those spots past the amount, you know, like they charge their car, and then you couldn't just, for example, leave your car there all day or leave your car there. Because we need those parking spots, there's a parking shortage in town, but also those parking spots have something different about them than any other parking spot, so I think my goal would be to have quick turnover for those spots.
Clarification, can you tell me how they do that?
Yeah. They only, they only charge parking while the car's plugged in. Which means that if you park there, anybody else that parks in those spots doesn't get charged parking because they have no way of knowing that someone's in the spot. The only way they know a car's in the spot is if it's plugged in a charge point, and they're paying for the electricity.
How much is the charge? The parking charge?
I, I forget what the, do you know what the current rate is? I actually have a screenshot that I took as a test when I wanted to see how much that was, and it's in my.
Is.
Like it's seventy-five cents or a dollar an hour, or that was the old rate.
So that's on top of the charging?
Right, and so, and just to clarify or add a little other item.
Dollar twenty-five an hour.
Oh, twenty, so the old rate must have been that, we went it up to one twenty-five, so they get charged that rate for parking whether or not it's drawing power to charge their car, so if they finish their charging session and they're still plugged in and they've gone off, it's going to continue to run the parking meter.
It's true, but at that point, they're just like any other car in that parking lot.
I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying that's.
And, and you also want to realize when you say those spaces, the, the way they build the charging cords, they can hit any of four or five spaces in front of those two stanchions, so it's not just one parking place in front of the charger.
I'm wondering if anybody else happens to have knowledge of what standard practice in other towns, like the ones that come to mind that seem most comparable are the ones like in Middlebury by the footbridge, Dorkia, you have some insight?
I'm kind of the like, yeah. Can you come up?
Thank you.
Dorothy Alonjewin, currently a resident of Brandon. So seeing the topic on the agenda, I did a little test today, and just for feedback, I've been in the four, last four years, sorry, last four months, been shuttling people professionally. I've put on twenty thousand miles on my car in those four months, so that's about five thousand miles a month. I have an electric vehicle, I depend on charging stations in order to provide my service. I did a test today. Coming back from Burlington, the superchargers, we chose the fastest chargers Tesla provides, which are now opening also to other EV car companies, so other. So other brands are starting to charge there as well. Charge on average 43 cents a kilowatt hour. The cheaper one out of the flock that's in the state is for Gents with 42 cents a kilowatt hour and 12 stations. Versus a home charger, you know, when you plug into your outlet, that's currently 17 cents a kilowatt hour roughly from the power station, power company. I went to three different charge point, non-Tesla charging stations, which are considered level two, which is the middle speed between your home outlet and the supercharger. There was in Burlington, the Oak ledge park, which is right by the lake on the waterfront. It's off-season, but it was pretty busy and they charged me 20 cents a kilowatt hour. In the the Tesla, jumping back to Tesla, but it's a mid-range speed charger. In Middlebury, they charged me zero. And in Middlebury at the co-op, behind the co-op is a charge point charger. They charged me a dollar a kilowatt hour. And Brandon currently is at 44 cents a kilowatt hour. Some stations apply a parking fee. Some stations, particularly the superchargers, apply a idle fee after you're done charging. The point that they're trying to make is not to sit and block a charging station when the next person's already waiting in line. For me, speed convenience is a key factor in order to do what I do. I frequent superchargers because they do quickly what I need them to do. And the other piece that I just wanted to throw in is not just the fee, but also what you're getting as the person visiting. I think the point why communities have these charges is most people charge at home. So why do you need another charger somewhere else? You need to top off in between, just like with a gas station. And if you, if a town is smart, they set these things up so people are encouraged to hang out a little bit, have lunch, grab a cup of coffee. And on a side note, for me traveling as a soul woman, safety is huge, light in the area. The station behind the Dunkin' Donut right now, once the mobile station goes dark in the evening, you have a dark tunnel to walk through to a backlit lot, true, but it's not all that enticing. And having done a lot of night charging lately, it's interesting, but you know, the field changes when the daylight is gone. So safety is a piece, just as I can.
Thank you.
So Tim, I wanted to get you. We have two stations?
Two stanchions with four handles. So you can actually charge four cars at a time.
Four. So we could charge as many as eight cars at?
Four.
Four?
This four handles.
Does anyone know that usually, I mean, do we have?
I've never seen all four occupied at the same time.
No, commonly two.
So the parking fee is to encourage people to move on, is that?
Well, but that's the interesting thing about the parking fee, which Dorothea just pointed out is that one of the things that we want is for people to, which is why we have a mid-speed charger and not a high-speed charger, is we want people to stay for a couple hours and have lunch or, you know, go to Dunkin' Donuts. And that's typical with these mid-speed chargers is you spend, you know, an hour or more because it doesn't go really fast.
What would you think of referring to it as an idle fee instead of a parking fee? Because I can see your point about parking. My concern is just that those specific spots are different than any other spot in town. So you're not comparing apples to apples to say, well, you know, the spot at Hannaford's is free, you know? That's not a fair comparison because the one at Hannaford's doesn't have potential of earning us money.
I'd be open to the idea of having an idle fee that kicks in after like two hours, something like that. Because that would achieve your desired result of not having people leave things there overnight, but it would allow the two hours that we really would like for people to stay there. And whether that's operational is an interesting question. And it's also, well, I mean, Brian's initial motion, which is to have the fee rise with a rate, I think makes a ton of sense. Because certainly as electricity goes up, we should have it go up. But it should be the cost of the electricity. That was, we should be having that's what should determine how much we charge is the cost of electricity, not the cost plus.
Is that a service that we have to change that fee or is it going to be done?
Super easy.
Super easy.
Yeah. So I didn't bring my computer. Could have looked at it right now. I'm almost certain that you can check off the box with start charging for parking after X number of minutes and you just move a dial.
You know, and with Bill in the room especially, I've made this pitch before, but I'll just sharpen it now, which is that this is an economic development tool. This is another way to attract people to Brandon is to know that we're an easy place to stop and grab a bite to eat and charge your car. And more and more people have these and it's, it's just another feather in our cap.
Tim's right. The longer people stay in town, the more they spend here. And I know the downtown merchants certainly like that and occasionally decide to move here after staying here for a couple hours, so.
Most of the chargers, definitely they're not Brandon citizens. They're out of
I think, I know when I got my first electric car, I didn't have a charger and that's when I was living in Middlebury. And I used the public chargers even though I was a local. And I think there are people here who, for different reasons, either because they live in an apartment nearby or something, will use those chargers and they're local. But I think if we looked at the statistics, the vast majority of people that use it are from out of town.
It seems like when, when I've noticed the same car over and over, my, I don't know this, but my guess is that it's like until they have something installed at home. I'd like to sort of find a bit of a compromise because I think there's a fair point to be made. I also do think we want to have some amount of turnover so that they aren't all full and people can stop. So what if, what if we said that after? So like you charge your car that takes an hour or two?
Two hours to me is a sweet spot because that means they come into town and they've spent a little bucks.
So maybe after one hour of no charging, then we start charging the idle fee and refer to it as an idle fee because it's not really a parking fee. I think, I think that's a very valid point. So one hour, so you charge, you stop charging, you get an hour of sort of grace after that hour, you start paying a dollar twenty-five an hour.
You're making that as a
Amended?
Amended, amended.
What is it, Charlene? Do you want to answer those and then I'll make mine?
Your original motion, Brian, from yours is to increase the rate of the charging station by 5.26% and automatically every year when GMP's rate increases.
That's the original.
That's the original motion. And then Tim's and Ralph's second motion is to eliminate the parking fee associated with those two spots.
And I'm happy to entertain Heather's friendly amendment to that to include a an idle fee after an hour of charging.
So it'd be no parking fee, but an idle fee after one hour. That's
Yeah.
That's good with both of you. So that's the amendment.
So just to clarify, you want the idle fee to kick in an hour after the charging is complete, right?
Yes.
That was your idea?
So the whole thing altogether is 5.26% increase. And then every year thereafter, we increase according to what GMP does. And the change that we're making to sort of a rule is
Got it as two separate moments.
Okay.
There's two separate moments.
Okay, perfect.
Unless you rescind and rescind and then make one new motion.
No.
No, but, but for clarification, it's interesting and I'm happy to, but I just want for clarity, we're already charging more than what GMP charges for a kilowatt. And so the 5.26 is, it has a built-in profit and I just want that to be clear. Is it? And I'm okay with that if that's what you want to do.
So I am going to move this question, the amendment first, which the amendment would be that there's no parking fee. It's an idle fee, one hour after the charge is complete. Is that correct as you?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of that amendment, please say aye. So now we're back to Brian's, which is to increase the rate 5.26 now and following Green Mountain Powers increases as they happen with this idle thing on, correct?
Yeah, correct.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Opposed? No. Got it.
Fine work.
That takes care of item seven. Item eight, lower Carver Street reclassification. It's possible schedule site visit and hearing possible. Mr. Hopkins, like your
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I provided in the packet kind of all the information that I have about the Vermont statute. You're aware of my concern that I've expressed to you and several of you have shared about the trash on Carver, lower Carver Street and the costs in staff time and machine time and, and disposal money that the town has paid to get rid of some construction debris that was recently deposited into the river. So I would highlight a couple of points from the statute that I pasted there from section 792 and 793. So when we're talking about a road that goes between two towns, the Select Board shall notify the Select Board of the other town. The two boards shall establish a time for hearing, give notice of it. And then in 793, the Select Board shall proceed in the same manner as the Select Board of one town. So if you want to pursue this idea, what you would need to do is approach the Pittsburgh Select Board directly and set a time when they would be willing to do a site visit and hold a joint hearing.
I like that idea. I'm in total support of doing this. And I must say in passing, I'm amused to see it formally referred to as lower Carver. It's that, oh, upper Carver, lower Carver is an interesting ring to it. But yes, no, I totally support this and so
It's actually upper Carver Street because it's upstream.
Okay.
But we call it lower Carver Street.
Geographically, yes, I get it. There's other socioeconomic aspects to it as well.
I, I'm interested in pursuing this conversation with Pittsburgh because that's a place where I wish I could ride my bike. And I would not go by myself because I believe it to be unsafe and there's evidence of unsafety all over the ground on that road. Which is a real shame because it's otherwise an absolutely beautiful place that could be lovely.
Other comments from the board?
I don't think we need to do it. It's a waste of time. It's not going to pass.
When you say it's not going to pass, why do you think it's not going to pass?
Pittsburgh's not in favor of it.
Do you, do you have any understanding of their reasoning?
They want to keep it open. There's farmland out there. Farmers need to still have access to their land. As I'm aware, both towns have to agree to close it.
I did speak with every farmer in Brandon that has land down there. They all think it's a good idea. We're not talking about bollards or boulders. We're talking about gates.
And I must say, given the financial climate we're in, I think this is going to save us money. Because the, any cost we put into maintaining that road, in my mind, is misspent money. And so I would like to get us to stop spending money on that road. And I think the only way to do that safely is to turn the road into a trail.
I think you'll find your trash will go to another road.
My
People that are going to dump, they're going to dump, they're going to find another road that
My concern is that now that we, I don't know if it's a change, but certainly we have been required to spend a thousand dollars on cleaning up. So we have already spent a thousand bucks anytime somebody dumps something in the, can you repeat the?
They required us, the town, to clean up any refuse that was deposited in the water. And what was deposited in the water most recently was a dump trailer of roofing shingles. And we had to send two staff members down there with the equipment. It took time. It took equipment time. And then the state was not, they were not going to say, okay, on your word, it's acceptable that you've done this. They required us to produce receipts for disposal fees for the construction material that we got rid of.
So my concern is having spent time on that road because I just have over the years. It's a good place to ride horses. When I was younger, it's that's not the only time somebody's dumped in the river. I guess that's my thought. And so if we are now on the hook for that at potentially a thousand bucks a pop, it's just a lot of money.
Is our hand in the back of the room, if you'd like to come up, up here, that has already been said or hasn't been said or? And I just had one thing while you're getting there. Just so the public is aware of what totally we're talking about is that there's continual dumping there. I do know for a fact that we took a full truckload of debris out on green up day. Which was a lot. And then we had this dumping of roofing shingles, which are hazardous waste. And we had to both pay to have them removed and then pay to have them put a dump properly. So that's what prompted this discussion.
Correct. Dave, so it's my understanding that when we got the F-150 for the police department, it was to monitor roads such as that. And I spent a lot of time down on that road, both hunting and fishing and shooting, whatever. Never seen a police officer on that road. Do you think that maybe we could monitor that road as well as others? And do something with people that are littering? If not?
Yeah.
Other than close the road?
Question to me, no, I don't think we could effectively prevent littering by monitoring that road. I don't think we have enough police staff. That there will be calls for people who are in actual jeopardy that require immediate response and to station an officer on that, on that lightly traveled road on the off chance that someone's going to drive by and dump trash, I don't think is something that the police chief would find would be a priority he would support.
Well, I don't mean, Seth, by monitoring the road, you know, 24/7, but, you know, drive up and down it maybe once a day. They're on the backside and they turn around the Pittsburgh line and go back around because we met them. They'll just drive through. It's a passable road. The town can get reimbursement from the state to maintain that road.
We really can't because it's class three, but it's not up to standards and we don't maintain it in the winter and we haven't for many years.
So what would it take for it to standard?
It would take some culverts to be installed. Jeremy talked with me about the municipal roads general permit requirements. And it would take some culverts and some ditching and possibly some raising with more material.
So the previous highway offered to purchase material for in front of golf course. A penny million, they dug it out and I didn't use it on that road. We brought it back to ten more so we could sell it.
I have no knowledge of that situation, but I will note it down.
It doesn't take much on that road for, for batting a limited ditching. Four days total. Well, the road doesn't have to be perfect because it is a heavily traveled road. There are disabled people in this town that get fun down there. Because that permits the vehicle to shoot from the vehicle. And you're basically gonna just take it to, can't do that.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Everybody waiting behind you.
Joe Bertrand. I grew up in this town, been on that road for forty plus years. And the trash has been there for forty plus years. Unfortunately. We have a lot of dirtbags who have no common sense or appreciation of our natural beauty. We don't have law enforcement down there doing anything. In fact. I've gone through some trash and pulled some names out of it and they've done nothing to rope them in. So part of the problem is there isn't law enforcement. Which there should be. Now, we can't get rid of our law enforcement and expect we're gonna have anybody to go down there. We need law enforcement, period. The road has been here since Brandon's been here. And to think it could be turned over to nothing more than a bike trail is a bunch of hogwash. And who's making money off the bike trail? Whose company makes the money to put that in and eliminate? Citizens from going down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
That might have been cast my way. So uh my bicyclists do not ride Carver Street and they won't ride Carver Street because they ride paved roads.
Ken.
Jan Coolidge, have you ever thought of putting some trail cameras up? So you might be able to catch some of these people. Once you get it in the paper that, you know, the police have. Arrested someone or find someone for dumping trash on town roads. You don't have to say what town road because you don't want to publicize it. Um, it, you know, put it at some strategic locations. Monitor it, put some fake ones out there so they think they're, you know, but. Maybe that's a. Another solution.
I I must say, I I walk that road a lot. It's just, you know, below my house and um it's it's a great walk and. The idea we're gonna catch somebody dumping is really hard to imagine. I mean, the places, they just stop randomly at any spot. Even though there is a favorite spot where sometimes stuff gets there, but it's like. It it's appalling to see just at a random place, garbage. And and so I don't think we're gonna catch them with a camera. I don't think we're gonna catch them with police. Um. It's 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 really hard to apprehend someone who wants to drop stuff off in the middle of the night on the road. It's um. And and as much as the problem's probably been around for forty years, um. Sadly, when I walk down there, there's new trash periodically. It's um, it's not something that is just. There from, you know, ten years ago. This is, this happens. People bring tires down there when they don't want to pay the recycle fee and they just drop them off the side of the woods. It's um. It's it's a problem we need to adj- address as a a a community to continue to raise people's. Respect. I mean, I loved with Mr. Bertrand's um comment that, you know, people need to have respect for the. Our town and our property.
No more.
Okay, I just wanted to say, uh, when we got started investigating this after the uh. The cost for the dumping, the first phone call that we made was to to David Mills, the. Who's on the select board in Pittsburgh, who's a landowner down there, because we figured he'd be the first person to talk to. He was absolutely on board. The second landowner we contacted was Omia, who owns a large portion of that land on there, and they were enthusiastically supportive of people. That misuse their land, that trespass on their land and dump on their land. They were excited. They offered to donate the gate to make it happen. This is not us. Looking or requesting that the select board look to ban people from being down there. It's to make it harder for people to go down there and trash the place. That is, and all of the landowners, every one of them said, yes. Every one of them did.
Neil Suen said his hand up.
Neil, Neil on uh Zoom.
Yeah, I you'll have to tell me if if I'm audible. Um. I agree with Jan Coolidge. Uh, using trail cams, um, they're motion activated. For the cost of probably four hours of police coverage, you could have four cameras. And move them around. And just by random chance, it would seem to me that you're gonna catch somebody. And if you have a a. Fine schedule in place. It might be. Not necessary for a long stretch of time before the word gets out that people are getting fined for dumping.
Hey, thank you very much. Next up.
Kevin Smith, um. I've lived on. Lower Carver Street. Upstream. For fifty-two years. My grandparents before that. My great grandparents before that, so obviously I've got some history there. Um, I traveled that low road a lot from the time I was ten years old. On bicycles to go to the Giddings Farm uh when I was a boy. Um, dumping has always been a huge issue down here. There is an area that belongs to uh one of the fields of the David Mills, um, and I sympathize with them. Dumping there and people, instead of just bringing targets, bringing tires, televisions. Anything, you know, it'd be one thing if you go down there and you shoot a pumpkin. Pumpkin's biodegradable. It goes back to the earth. But. The trash doesn't. Um. I do sympathize with David. Um, Amia, on the other hand. I realize they provide a lot of jobs for a lot of people in this area. I do understand that. Um, overseas company. Um. But they don't want nobody to use their land. I think that's pretty piss poor for community. Um. I am a hunter. I am a fisher. Um. I think it's horrible with a couple of bad apples have ruined it for everybody and I have to agree. That dumping under darkness, how are they gonna tell? Um, because I go down there too and I see trash. In different spots. Um, but a lot of the trash that I've seen hasn't been picked up in some time. Um. As far as putting. You know, something in the paper that you caught somebody down there, um, the majority of the people that. Go down there to dump their trash, they don't bother to read the paper, so they ain't gonna know that that happened or not. Sad but true. Um. You, I think closing the road is a great idea. I do not. As far as maintenance goes. For the road, road is down to hard pan in a lot of places and it's not bad, it's usable. There are places in the road which are past Willie's Bowl. What we call the straight stretch, which is by where the shooting range is on David Mills' property. That is below grade. The ditches are higher than the road, so there's huge massive holes. If that area was built up and the water can drain off the road, there's less maintenance. You're not having to maintain the road all the time because it's packed down and water can run off it. I don't think it would take a lot of a lot of material to bring it back up to grade or dig the ditches down on the side and cuff them off. Um. That is an awesome, awesome role. Um, the scenery down there is unbelievable. And I think it should be open for everybody. How we go about getting the people to stop dumping in that in those areas or to to catch these people? That's the question. What do we do? What's the step that we take? Um. Being that the towns are on board and David Mills is on board. And and I, like I said, I really sympathize with more than anybody with David Mills. Because he has to hay that property and and if you. Get a veil of hay that you have to feed your horses or you have to feed, obviously in his case, his beef. And then it, you gotta have a vet bill and your vet comes and you lose a beef, that's a lot of money. That's a hard hit for a farmer. Um. I just think this needs to be thought out a little more than just putting gates up and closing the road. I think there's other, I think there can be other alternatives. I think we just need to talk about it a little more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question as to why are people dumping road? Can't they dump it on the road? Can't they afford the fees for the dump?
You could have to ask them.
That, I know, you have to. Well, it's not irrational. It's not good that they're doing it, but they're doing it possibly because they can't afford it. And I know a lot of elder folk that like to drive their cars down through there on a Sunday afternoon. And look at the nature. They don't want to drive Route Seven. They don't want to drive a paved road. They want to go slow. They want to go at their own pace. They want to get out, hear the birds. So blocking it out to some folks that couldn't walk the whole distance of the road for whatever reason, I don't believe is a good idea.
Other comments? I see a hand, Ricky.
I don't really have anything. New to add except for um. That it's the individuals that are dumping that are the problem. And the trail cameras seem to be the best option because if you close that road. They're just gonna dump their garbage somewhere else. And that isn't the only road in Brandon that has problems like that. Um, a few years ago, I lived up on Richmond Road and people throw their garbage out up there. Um. People come over here with truckloads of tires. From other places looking for country roads to throw their crap out on. And um. I think it's uh I would put more effort into finding the guilty parties and um. Finding them heavily. Then uh to. Make that road inaccessible to the elderly. And to the disabled in this community who do currently use and enjoy that. It's um. It's exclusory. It's making it just for a certain set of people instead of everyone.
Thank you. Jan, one more time.
Does the town currently have a policy on what the fine would be if you get caught dumping?
Is that in any ordinance?
And it's not spelled out in any specific, we don't have a specific trash ordinance. I think it just defaults to the state ordinance. I think it's five hundred dollar fine for littering. Dumping, I believe, I just.
Maybe put that in the paper that if you got caught. You know, dumping garbage, now that, you know, let people know. They see it, say something and that there is a fine. I, education.
One, one question that I have um is around, I have also heard stories. Um. In my life before I was a select board member of people. Looking through the bags of trash being like, I have had it. This is on my road. I'm gonna look through this bag. I'm gonna find a name. I'm gonna like tell on them, right? And. Um. That's as far as it went. So whoever said that same story. I have heard others say that experience of like, even if you can find a name. I don't know what the disconnect is, so that's a question that I would have that. In talking with Pittsburgh, I think that my intention would not necessarily be to close the road, but to to problem solve this because I don't think. My goal is not to say, well, just dump on this side of the border there, guys. My, we'd like less trash. It's it's all one road, you know? So. That's kind of my thought.
Yes, it's not about telling somebody, it's about collecting scumbags and 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 we should have more law. And there should be a steeper point. If the state's five hundred, the town of Brandon should be five thousand and catch them. Okay, the only way you get rid of the snake is cut the snake's head off.
Uh, okay, one more time for Ricky. And now we're gonna move the question.
Well, I'm just. When I was residing up on Richmond Road and we found receipts with that they could. Identify the persons that were throwing the trash out, that the the police did nothing about it.
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Yes, sir.
Will you pass him that?
About a year ago. Or often on, we've had people that come to our apartment building and they dumped their trash in our dumpster. Some of our tenants have gone through their garbage, notified the police, and they went and found them in West Rowland. So if you can get the police to do something, they ought, they should.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on this? Think we should table this. Um, I know Pittsburgh's has one select board member that's in favor of closing. The rest of them are not, so I don't think we're ready yet.
I I think um. As a contrasting view, um, I think pursuing this to where we could have a joint. Um, uh, meeting and and then have a hearing where. People could come and and, you know, uh, speak. Uh, I think it would be desirable to um. Continue the work that's already been done because you've talked to landowners and you've gotten a lot of positive feedback. And so I think taking the next step of um moving towards a a um. A joint um meeting to consider this um is a good idea.
If, go ahead, Ralph.
I- isn't that what we're looking to do here now is to have a joint? Meeting with Pittsburgh and discuss these options of cameras and all the suggestions that have come up. Not to close the road right now. We're not looking to close it right now, are we? I didn't get that.
It seemed like the joint meeting was to talk about whether or not to close the road.
Yeah, that could come out of that meeting or it could. Or cameras could come out of it or.
Yeah, a lot of things could come out of it.
I I think we go with the meeting. We should have the meeting with Pittsburgh so we can discuss all these things that we've come up with.
Say, imposing the road should be a public bowl. A public bowl, not just a a small board bowl.
No, I I wholeheartedly agree with you, Ralph. My my intention with the meeting is not to come and have a meeting. You know, with a lock and a key ready to go. It's to have a meeting and. Every, everybody who has spoken has said, we love the road. There's too much trash. I mean, that is one thing that. Everybody agrees on. And I assume Pittsburgh, I think it's a safe assumption that Pittsburgh residents feel the same way. It's a beautiful road and there's too much trash. So I I don't see why we wouldn't join forces and just. Feel it out and if after discussion, that's what comes out of it, then there will have been a lot of minds at work. And if it's not, then even better because one thing that I hadn't considered was how many people could access. Nature from their vehicles on that road.
Um. I would be more than willing to attend a Pittsburgh Select Board meeting and just share the comments that were. Presented here. To see what their feelings are and then come back. I mean, we're we are not at a stage of looking to throw up the road or close the road. At this point, um. I've been a Brandon resident for forty years and I have been down that road. And I know it's been an ongoing problem for a lot of years. Sitting at this table and discussing the. Town budgets. We have to find what we can do to not be spending money down there picking up trash, so.
Well, and and I also point out with with your um. Point of view in mind that um Steinberg is actually a very analogous situation. Because that was a road that was a through road and um and it had some trouble with people. Doing stuff down in there that was annoying people that don't land down that way. And that when we decided to make that into a trail, that was a desirable way to allow people to continue to use the road. But just not to drive down to um have problems down there. And so I I see this very analogously.
I agree with the people that are stating though that if we close the road. The people that are throwing their TV sets and car tires out are gonna just pick another road. It will be a long swamp road. It'll be.
Like Steinberg, though, I mean, that same argument could have been made about Steinberg and yet we realized that by making that place unavailable, it was just. Part of the the uniqueness about Steinberg and about Syndicate Road or Lower Carver as we're talking. Is that those are particularly untraveled places, which is why it invites that kind of behavior. Where other roads that are more traveled are less easy to dump and trash and party and whatever they're gonna do on.
I don't know.
Again, I think the analogy to Steinberg is strong.
People, people find places to dump trash all over. I grew up traveling corkscrews. It's bad.
I'm done.
Oh, the, uh, sorry.
We need you in a mic, I'm sorry. We can hear you, but they they can't, and that's a permanent record.
I just wanted to point out that, that Pittsburgh and Brandon having a communication about this is great, but Pittsburgh has about three quarters of a mile of that road. So Brandon residents, like I feel, you know, should have more of a say than, than what Pittsburgh does. Which has got a very small section. They have police presence down there and on their half, there's section of the road. There's not a lot of dumping.
And there's, along the river. And that, and that's what creates the biggest problem is the river.
And there's also landowners that live down on the Pittsburgh end.
Correct.
And so, right, all that makes sense.
Right. And to your point about Steimer Road, I do believe that the trash that used to be on Steimer Road is now down there. Period. Cause they can't access Steimer Road.
Okay, we're gonna go one more time and then we're gonna try to wrap this up.
Yeah, the, the, the amount of travel traffic on down in City Road is actually significant. And if we had law enforcement or a game warden like Dave Rowden, when he was alive, he used to patrol that. And he got, got rid of a lot of rabble down there. We don't have that now. That is a well-traveled road. In fact, if we had a problem on either road, it's a, it's an alternate rule um, for traffic. And down at Steinberg's was a couple of bad apples with big tires tearing up the road. And it ruined it for all of us. Again, I grew up here and that was the place I used to go all the time. So it, it's, it's, it's not, it's not good to close it off. And all because you got a couple of bad apples. Let's, let's get some law enforcement and get rid of the bad apples instead of shutting everything down.
Anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to say anything before I end this? Okay, so um, if I go to Pittsburgh, I would love to have another board member go. If somebody would like to, Ralph would go. Is that?
Sounds like a great idea.
Amenable for the other rest of the board to want us to do that?
That'd be a public meeting?
That would be warned in their town the way their meetings would be warned. I believe their meetings are on Wednesday nights, uh, opposite weeks that we are, but I'm not sure. I would have to contact their board chair and, and get permission and invited. I can go, but for them to let us speak, we would have to be recognized to speak.
I would be happy if you would take that on. Thank you.
And then we could come back and okay.
I'm gonna step up for a second. I'll be right back.
Okay, is that, that's amenable for everyone as a, a point at this point? Yep. All right, I'll be in touch with you, Ralph, on that. The Brandon Planning Commission adoption of the Blue Law, uh, Brandon Land Use Ordinance. Uh, what that is on our agenda for is the uh planning committee has worked to write and prepare the, the land ordinance. They have had their public meetings to receive input. And now they are just passing it on to us to look at. And um if we don't have questions pertaining to it, um, we would be set to uh, schedule a hearing, which was what was mentioned earlier on. Um, would you like to add anything else? And I know Jack's here.
Right, Planning Commission Chair, Jack Schneider is here. Um, and right, the earliest date available for the hearing would be Thursday, December twelfth.
Correct.
I can't attend that night, but if other folks can.
That night, just like anything after that, but still in December.
Oh.
That's the earliest date based on when we can get this warned.
Okay. I'm comfortable if it's, if that's the night that works with everybody else, I'm comfortable.
Normally we would do that an hour before our regular select board meeting in the past, I believe.
Monday after that is the sixteenth, which would be, you know, probably a budget workshop, but it could be a six o'clock hearing or something. The select board meeting later in December is the twenty-third, was getting close to the holiday for some people. I don't know if you wanted to alter your calendar or not. Sixteenth could be very fine.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to do it a couple of days before Christmas because that would probably not have anyone come to the hearing. Not that many people come to a public hearing on Bluelow very often. Anyway, pardon? Questions on this?
Sixteenth. Sixteen, are you moving toward the sixteenth for the?
I am, I am fine with.
Monday the sixteen?
Monday the sixteen?
Six o'clock? Monday, December sixteenth at six o'clock, Mr. Chair.
That's fine with me. But fine for other board members?
There's a question.
You could do that one.
I could do that one, yep.
Question or comment?
Question. Yes.
Setting a date for a public hearing with word?
Yes.
Does that mean that everyone on this left board has read the revisions and approves the revisions?
By that date, we would have our, yeah, we, we just received this. We have not read the, all the revisions, I don't think, where. We're here, we can ask questions of Mr. Schneider if we wanted to at this point. Or we can do it and then have our public meeting.
I just wanted to say I went to their meeting and not a lot of people showed up. But over half the people who did showed up are concerned about the increases in density and the lack of parking here in Brandon. And I haven't been able to understand why the language in the Brandon Land Use Ordinance has to be changed to meet the state language exactly. Where, where that where that direction comes from, like.
I defer the Planning Commission Chair if he's interested in responding. My understanding was that was a legislative act.
Judge Schneider, it's our understanding that when the state legislates a change, uh, that it has to be reflected in our zoning bylaws. We have a town plan that the uh, Select Board approved earlier this year and the enhanced energy plan. And the zoning bylaws, uh, towns that have all three of those qualify for grants. If we have bylaws that do not conform to the state uh, legislation, I would guess that we would be considered to not have by, by the state to have zoning bylaws.
Why do we have to get this done in December?
Town applied for and accepted a grant to assist with the bylaw revision, and that's a condition of this grant.
Okay.
Got a question, Jack? When, do you remember when we started the process?
Well, the Select Board approved the town plan in February.
Okay.
And that's the basis for the zoning bylaws. So we got started in March. We've had eleven meetings since then. All of them were open to the public. We had a uh, walking tour downtown. We've reached out to the uh, Chamber Businesses about signage. Uh, we also talked to the DRB and we had input from the previous and the current zoning administrator. Uh, last Wednesday, we had our public hearing with fifteen days warning. So it's a hundred and five page document and it took us a long time to get here. I wish we could have had it done a little bit earlier. But it's uh, zoning is not terribly interesting, but it's complicated.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for doing that.
What, what were the major questions that you're, you're? Were there, I mean, fully attended, but some questions?
I'm better attended than I expected. Um, there were people up on Seminary Street that were opposite the old high school. They were most concerned about the issue of parking. So apparently people there park on the wrong side of the street, which is really not a planning commission issue. It's it's a no parking police issue. So that was an instance where you have a unique special special building that's in the central business district. That's adjoining to a residential area. So they were most concerned. They asked questions about that. I don't think they objected to what was in the bylaw update.
Thank you. Brad?
So just to clarify, it's not that we have to change the bylaws if that we are changing them so we can qualify for grants?
So, Mr. Chair, um, it wouldn't just be grants. It would be stuff like the ERAF when we have a flood, right? And FEMA comes in with seventy-five percent. If we don't have all of those boxes checked off like Jack was outlining, we wouldn't be eligible for state assistance towards the town's share. So we would be on the hook for like twenty-five percent of Newton Road. Instead of in this case, in this case, it was actually two point two percent that we were on the hook for. And that's a few hundred thousand dollars is the big project.
And the land use perm procedure is updated every so many years. Anyway, we did this when you and I were on the board together before. I don't remember what year that was, but it, it's not unusual to update the Brandon Land Use Ordinance's to earn standards.
So the um primary concern being density and there's already not enough parking for the people who live here, um. I'm wondering, uh, the, the two acts that were quoted at that meeting, I think were one eighty-one and the Home Act, which were both passed in recent years. Um, and there's been a huge turnover in the House. So if any of these acts are modified or repealed this year, does that mean we're going to do this again next year?
You could if we wanted to keep our bylaw in conformity with any legislative changes that the new legislature makes, yes.
And it sounds like we need to if we want grants.
And as I say, not just grants, but, but sometimes other assistance.
Jack?
Uh, both of those uh, pieces of legislation were signed off by the governor. Because a large part of what's involved in that is repealing, rolling back some of the restrictions of Act two fifty. So the goal is to have more compact town centers, which is a very positive to have a nice walkable downtown. But also to, in those designated tiers, have it be easier to develop with fewer restrictions and expense caused by Act two fifty.
Um, Jack, sorry, I make you stand up again. Need the exercise, I think. The uh wasn't also one of the big things around act was to make it easier for accessory dwelling units to be built in Brandon. That's people converting their garages into housing for folks or like, for instance, if somebody that's in a house up front and they've got a carriage house out back to make it easier for them to build more housing.
Absolutely. When they say density, when they talk about infill, they use the term dwelling units. So you can have a duplex and that would be two dwelling units. You don't have to have individual single family houses. So where, uh, and if you look at the maps that are in the Blue, you'll see that in the village area, which is the pre-zoning part that was built a hundred and fifty years ago. There's not a whole lot of places to be developed. So anything that was previously built, lots, the uh, actually permanent signs and all that. That's all grandfathered. So really what the law changes impact are any new development.
Additional questions from the board? Picking that date, that date works for?
The which of the two dates did you choose?
December sixteenth at six PM.
I, I thought the two choices were the twelfth and the nineteenth. So um, you said December sixteen?
Came up on the note.
Those weren't, those weren't meant to be choices. They were just meant to be the earliest possibilities.
So great, the sixteenth.
It's the month, the sixteenth is the Monday.
Thanks.
Moving on?
Hi, my daughter appreciates it. It's her ninth birthday today.
Item ten on our agenda is public comments and participation for items that were not on the agenda, but that anyone wants to talk about. Board members have anything they want to add? Oh boy. Right, oh, wait, I see one more, one hand. Vicki just.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, exactly where can I find
the information you were saying about us having to have all that?
The ERAF and stuff? I can send it to you. It's, it would be from Vermont Emergency Management, um, which is within an Department of Public Safety. It's just, yeah, I'll send you, it's, it's, it's just like a page with the formulas. It might also be in our
eight twenty-five.
Has it been twenty-five?
Eight twenty-five?
Yep.
Hey, it's eight twenty-five. Board's going to go into recess for five minutes and then on to executive session.
Meeting is back in session.
At eight thirty-six.
Thirty-six and wanting to move into executive, somebody make a motion, please.
Enter executive session regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one VSA three thirteen sub three sub A sub three to include the town management team.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor and entering executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no one?
Recording's going off.
Eight fifty-seven, we are coming out of the executive session with no action taken. And another motion?
Um, I make a motion that we enter executive session regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one VSA three thirteen sub three sub A sub three to include the town management team.
Second. If we needed that.
Eight fifty-five, coming out of executive session. To action taken.
Motion, would you?
All in favor?
Aye.